Like to call to order the December sixteenth, twenty twenty four Macedonia Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Ms. Muskie?
Here.
Mr. Roberts is absent.
All right, first is approval of November eighteenth, twenty twenty four minutes. Anybody have any comments?
I did not.
I read them. They look good. I moved to approve as submitted.
All right, second.
Awesome.
Give it to Chris. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved. All right, first up, Mr. Wrinkelman with the Saint Gregorio's on twelve fifty-two East Aurora Road, if you'd like to come up.
I have a bunch of samples here. You want me to carry those up and do something with them or?
Sure, if you want to bring them up now. We have comments from.
Oh, I didn't.
Oh, yeah, go grab your stuff. All right, maybe we'll first start out with.
Mr. France, your comments.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Chairman, my report dated December seventh. This is regarded regarding the preliminary plan approval for the Saint Gregorio's Indian Orthodox Church. And this is the third submission received to the planning commission. As we're aware, the applicant is requesting to construct just a little over, a little under forty-three hundred square feet for a fellowship hall addition. And then previously, the plans had noted construction of a retreat center that included suites designed for overnight accommodations. And as I had noted in my reports, and we had discussions here in the last two meetings, that use of the property is a concern as it relates to the R one single family residential district. The latest plan, which is schematic site plan dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, changes the, changes the retreat center to now being titled as classroom meeting room space. Looks like it's two thousand three hundred and thirty-four square feet. I think previously it was a little under nineteen hundred square feet. I'm sure the applicant could speak to that. But as I had previously said, this, you know, the accommodations for guest suites or guests spending the night is really a zoning use issue and recommend that go to the board's zoning appeals. Now, the applicant's plans again show that it's six classroom meeting room spaces separated on either side, three on one side, three on the other, I believe, with a men's, separated by a men's and women's accessible restroom that provides symbols for sinks, toilets, and accessible showers. There's also a large circular symbol. I wasn't sure what that was, but sure the applicant could speak to that. And that issue of changing to the meeting space, I think it's something we just need to talk through with the applicant tonight. I am concerned about the showers in particular, that that's not something that would, you would typically find as being an accessory use to a principal permitted use. Under eleven thirty-three oh two definition of accessory use states that accessory use or accessory structure means a subordinate use or structure constructed or installed on, above, or below the surface of a parcel which is located on the same line as the main use or main building, and which is clearly incidental to and customarily found in connection with the main building or use, and is subordinate to and serves a main building or main use, and subordinate to the main, to the area of the main building or use. I, I don't believe showers in a church are subordinate or accessory to, to the church use. So I still remain concerned about that. I think we need to talk through that issue with, with the applicant's agent here this evening. Going past the use issue, I've brought up a few times about the off-street parking. The, the main church itself, I think, has enough parking for onsite parking for the main church itself. But then the addition, and now these classroom meeting room spaces, or whatever we're going to call them here this evening, I think the site is under parked. To, to accommodate that particular issue, the applicant has stated that they have a easement, a shared parking easement, or a shared parking arrangement agreement with the property to the south, the Methodist Church to the south. I'm sorry, to the, to the east. And, but to date, we haven't seen what that document is or how it explains. I've also have expressed concerns about how you get to that area from the subject property to the east to the Methodist Church. The revised plan that has come before the commission this evening now proposes a twenty-foot wide paved drive between the church parking lot and the adjacent Methodist Church with an adjacent five-foot path. So my comment to that is, well, good. It's good that we're seeing that connection to start to understand it at a schematic view. But on its face, it needs to be twenty-two feet wide pursuant to eleven seventy-one eleven B six of the code. So that's not a significant issue. It can be upsized by the two feet. My bigger concern is where that five foot, well, where the whole thing, where it kind of dumps out into the existing Methodist Church parking lot. Looks like it's kind of coming right in the area, and I included a, an aerial image, street view image of where I think it's coming out from the subject site onto the Methodist Church site. And there's three unscreened dumpsters in that location. While that's an issue for the Methodist Church, those have to be screened according to the code. Because it appears as though this driveway is going to impact that location. That change, I think, does necessitate the issue of dealing with those dumpsters. Even though it's on a separate property, they do need to be screened from view. But that in itself, the very concern is how it sort of dumps into that drive aisle, in particular, the pedestrian, pedestrian traffic in accessing through that drive aisle. So I think we just need to study that connection in more detail. I'm not opposed to it. But also, I think the, the commission needs to understand the shared use arrangement assumes that parking is met for the, let's say, the sharing parcel, not necessarily in this case, the receiving parcel. So the Methodist Church, I think it's incumbent on us to understand how many spaces they need for the size of their facility to determine if they have extra space to share. And let's say they are right on the nose with their off-street parking, then I think we need to understand the, the times and arrangements to make sure the Methodist Church isn't being shorted on parking because the subject property is consuming more parking than the Methodist Church can give. So just some study of that, I think, is necessary to truly understand it. But again, the idea of shared parking, I don't, I don't have an issue with it, and the code does allow for shared parking. But it, it explicitly describes those, those relationships. And I just think we need to sort of stick to that and understand how that parking arrangement will work. So those are kind of two of the big issues. And then I've said previously, that new drop-off area, and it's, it's a fairly large drop-off area, and how that relates to the existing parking and accessing through that drop-off area into the existing parking, it just feels a little wonky. And so that area should be studied as well. And if we can reduce some of that, that pavement, we might be able to pick up some extra parking on the subject site. So that's something that the applicant needs to really examine. And then I just detailed out then just some final additional comments about the materials and then screening of the HVAC and mechanical units. We just need to understand all of that. And then lighting and photometrics is an ongoing comment from our reports. The applicant stated photometric plan will be provided here at a later date, and then we will need information to fully evaluate the request. Detailed landscape plan is needed for the final development plan approval. The applicant's basically stated there's lots of trees on the site, and that should cover landscaping. I think if we're going to use existing onsite vegetation, we need to understand the condition and quality of that. Make sure that the grading limits of the proposed addition in parking lot aren't going to impact the existing vegetation that we're qualifying as vegetation to exempt from some of this requirement for additional landscaping. So a study of that, understanding of that is needed for the next stage of the plan review, as well as going beyond the conceptual notion of stormwater management, but I'm sure the engineer will speak to that in more detail. So I remain concerned about the, this notion of a quick conversion, if you will, from the overnight accommodations to meeting rooms. And then added to that, just on the plan as a side note, at one point on the, on the plans, I forget the sheet number, it states that there's no exit provided to the church or fellowship hall, but it looks like a door is being provided. Maybe I'm reading the plan wrong, and the applicant can speak to that. But I think that just gets to what is the intent of that space and how is it interlinked with the, with the existing church? And I can answer any questions the commission may have.
All right. Do you have any questions dealing with that or? Mr. France or?
I think we'll let Mr. Trump go and we can kind of come back to it.
Okay, Mr. White, if you would like to go over here.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. So some comments on my memo, and most of these, well, five comments. The first four are holdovers from the previous meeting with Saint Gregorio's here. We do need a wetland delineation of the site before we can issue any permit. Also, you do now show a preliminary area set aside for a detention pond, so that's a good thing. Certainly, we'll need the detailed calculations on that pond. As far as, as part of your final permitting, a woolwind that looks like is going to be your design engineer, so that I'm sure they can help you with both of those items. We're adding on a parking lot, which is fine, and it's indicated to be a hard surface parking lot, which is required, so thank you. The new parking areas will need a perimeter concrete curb for those areas. And the whole plan to this point is, is obviously very preliminary in nature at this point, so we'll need to advance those. Just more detailed plans as we move forward. And lastly, I did add one additional comment to kind of builds off of Brian's concerns about the shared parking and the driveway interconnect or access. And, you know, I guess my, my first concern is that at the, the neighboring church, the drive apron closest to Saint Gregorio's is a restricted access. It's right in, right out only. So I guess I have a concern or a fear that everybody leaving the Methodist Church that wants to make a left-hand turn is just going to simply use this access drive, go on to the Gregorio's parking lot, and then use Gregorio's driveway to make their left-hand turn. That certainly can't be the intent of this thing, but my concern is that that's what's going to happen, so. And then I think Brian made the points regarding access agreement with the neighboring church as well, and everything else that he mentioned, I, I think are all valid concerns. So that's it. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you. No, no comments? All right. I know we do also have comments from Architectural Review. There was a lot of materials and identifying things like that on the plan. If we come back to that, or Scott, if you've got any thoughts, you probably know this.
Yeah, we can go back to that.
Okay.
I think there's some other things we need to get to.
So I guess the biggest concern is the actual use that we've talked about before. And, you know, the, the change, I guess, the classrooms. I don't know if you want to explain what the thinking is from the church's side?
Okay, I had these, I had these items in the, I think they're different than how they arrived. Sorry about that. But that, I explained to them the position of the city. And I think with regret, they understood what you were, you know, what you were talking about as far as the living thing is concerned. But they wanted to have the space available to be able to use however they wanted to be able to use it for meetings, as long as people weren't living there. And they're planning on having, I mean, they have, they have youth. So they do activities, they have Sunday school classes, and right now, they're kind of scattered. There's a room in the back of the church that they put some tables and chairs in. There were some small meeting rooms behind their sanctuary that, that, I mean, very small meeting rooms that they were putting people in. And they were hoping to use the rooms, and that's probably my fault that I spelled that out the way I did. But that's what they, that's what Father James asked for to begin with in that previous plan. They're planning on meeting, they meet Sundays, they meet weeknights, they meet weekends, they have prayer meetings in smaller groups. And that's what they're planning on doing with those classrooms. They have Bible studies, they have Sunday school classes, they have youth meetings. It's just like in the fellowship hall, they play volleyball, and they play kickball. And this game that people play in a circle with a kick, I don't know what they call it. The youth, young kids, our grandkids just go crazy on it. I know, it's a form of kickball. They're inside of a ring, like a twenty-foot ring. And when you get hit with the ball, if you don't catch it, you get out of the ring, and it keeps going till. Anyway, they do all those kinds of things, and they wanted to have a couple of showers there for people to take showers if they wanted to. They just do a lot of activities and things. That's the reason the showers are there. If the showers are a drop-dead thing on whether this happens, they'll give up the showers. They'll give up just about whatever they need to give up to be able to get the spaces. They just have a lot of activities. The community is coming to them with wanting to have activities, and they don't have any room. And they're trying to cover the broadest range of activities they can. I think there's a note in there that I said too about this, there's some reference, and I don't remember who made the notes. I think it, it might have you, it might have been you, Mr. France. But there was something about the kitchen, like a future kitchen, I think. Well, it's not a, it's a future equipped kitchen, but it's part of the program, and I said that in here. They just don't have the money to buy all the appliances now. But you can't put the whole building up and then come back planning on the kitchen later. So they're going to run the pipes, you know, you don't want to go chopping up a four-foot concrete floor. So they're going to run the pipes, the space is there, and as soon as they have the money budgeted to put in the kitchen, they're going to. So it's, it's planned for now, not the future. They just can't afford it now. So that's why it's on the plan as something that they want to do. I thought, I think the other big thing, I mean, I don't know if that adequately explains, but they need the room. They need classrooms, they need meeting rooms, they need places to gather together for prayer and for Bible study. And they thought that was the best, when we talked together about this living idea, which was never part of the project anyway, that this would be the best way for them to get the space that they need to be able to do those various activities. So that's why it's on there, and that's why the showers are there for whatever happens if somebody's done all that, and then they want to take a shower, or they're, maybe they have a youth thing for two hours, and then they want to have a Bible study. Well, they don't want to go from the youth thing, and they're all sweaty, into teaching a Bible study, so they'd like to be able to take a shower. But that's their plan. But like I said, they'll, if, if showers are the deal breaker, they'll give up the showers. They'll walk in the bathroom and get a washcloth and do that spit thing people do at the sink, you know, if that's the way they have to clean up. And I totally understand the thing with the parking, and I put a note, I don't know everywhere it is now, at the bottom of my page three, I'm sorry, I didn't number them, but at the bottom of the third page, I think that's where it is. "A detailed shared, shared parking agreement related to hours and number of spaces and the disposition of the existing dumpsters is being discussed with the Methodist Church neighbors and will be made a part of the final submission. Saint Gregorio's has every intention of being a good neighbor and a good resident of Macedonia." The, the key to that thing is, when they have church services, that's the only thing they do on the campus. They're not going to be hosting a wedding or a volleyball tournament or I don't know what all, when they're having a church service. They have more than enough parking now for their church service. There's empty spaces every Sunday when they have a church service. The expansion of this thing has, I don't remember what it was, it added twenty-four spaces. And taking your suggestion on the wonky parking thing with all that pavement, we extended that strip of parking down and that island to eliminate some of that really wide, what did you say it was, seventy-some feet wide, I think? We eliminated that section, picked up four parking spaces, made the drive, drop-off drive smaller. So now, instead of having, I don't remember what we had, sixty-three or something? Right. Well, anyway, we have four more. Now I lost track of my numbers. But anyway, the parking went up by four. The whole point is, they don't need shared parking for what they're doing now, because Sunday mornings is, doesn't even use the whole parking lot. We have more than enough parking for when they use the fellowship hall based on the, what is it, five, five persons per car, I think, in occupancy? So there's more than enough parking for the fellowship hall when it's fully occupied, and they're not going to be holding a church service or doing Bible studies while the fellowship hall is being occupied. So the whole key on the shared parking is, from their perspective, like a fail-safe kind of thing. If, if, and I can't even imagine what it would be. Maybe they have a funeral for a dignitary, and so they're overwhelmed with people. They would need shared parking. But in a typical scenario, month after month, with the way they use the facilities, they will probably never need the shared parking, but they wanted to have the opportunity to have it if that should occur. And we, and I don't know, I don't know how the ratio works with the Methodist Church. I don't know what their seating capacity is. I'm sure probably at the time it was built, they had more than enough parking to handle their own facility if it was fully utilized. The problem at this point in time, why they're so easily agreeable to the shared parking, other than the fact that most of the time it will never be necessary, they don't get over a hundred people there on a Sunday morning for a church service. They haven't used eighty percent of their parking lot for years. So that's why they were so amenable to doing this, because it would not, I can't think of the word I want. It would not infringe on their ability to use their facility, pretty much no matter what happens, because they just don't use it that much. And I don't know if that adequately explains that part of it, but, and, I'm, I'm sorry, but and we already talked with Gregorio's about the dumpsters, and Father James is going to talk with the pastor at the Methodist Church. And Saint Gregorio's even offered to help the Methodist Church with some of the cost sharing for building an enclosure for those dumpsters to get them out of the way. And as far as the, I understand what you're saying about the left, the right, right, and the left turn thing. I don't know what you do with that. It's like people go someplace and they park here, and then they drive through the lot, somebody else's lot, to get out. I don't know if you put a sign up, you know, if you say, if you're over here, don't go over there. I don't know how you do that. But I understand what you're talking about. I kind of doubt that's going to be an issue. And the biggest reason I doubt it'll be an issue is because I can't see that overflow parking thing re, really being used all that much.
Yeah, if it's not used, then why even pursue it? I mean, it sounds like Gregorio's has enough parking on their own parcel.
They do.
Yeah.
They do.
In the one-off, maybe chance in which they're going to have death of a dignitary.
But, but is that?
At that time.
Is that, is that okay?
May I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
How many seats are in the existing church?
Well, as far as seats like pews, none. It's all done with movable, with chairs.
How many chairs?
And, you know, I, well, I don't know. I asked Father James, now I asked Abraham, the man that I'm working with that's part of the church. Their church membership is about twenty-five families, maybe thirty. So on a Sunday, if they ever got a hundred people, it would be, you know, the skies would open, probably. They just don't have that kind of attendance. But they believe that when they have the fellowship hall available, that's the thing that will bring more folks in to the property. And whether or not, I mean, and that's supposed to seat three hundred people, that's where we came up with the sixty cars. So there you go. We have more than sixty cars.
And that's where I keep coming back to. So you stated to us as the, as a design professional, three hundred seats.
Yes.
And it's one for five?
Yes.
Is what the code says for the place of worship?
Yes.
So just on, just on that alone, the addition needs how many spaces?
Sixty.
Sixty. And you're proposing how many total?
Sixty-four, I think it is. I really know, I confused myself with those added four spaces. I don't remember now. I have to go back and recount.
Yeah, so let's assume it's sixty-four. That means there's four spaces for the church.
If they use the church at the same time as they use the fellowship hall.
Yeah, but our, our, the code doesn't say, the code doesn't, it, it plans for worst-case scenario, not kind of what may or may not happen.
Okay.
And your own, you know, testimony here this evening, you, you said they're, they're, they're planning this big expenditure to draw more people in. And then previously, you've said that there would be these overnight situations that could come up where people attend a session, maybe it's a.
Retreat.
Retreat or a marriage counseling or something where they could go sometimes two, three days, upwards of five, six days, and they want to have the ability to stay overnight.
Which they can't do.
Right, but I'm a little confused because your, your testimony in the last two meetings was such that that's what they intended on doing. But I think I heard you say tonight, that's never been what they wanted to do, so some.
No, they never wanted anybody living there.
And living there and staying overnight are two different issues, so it's a play on words. That's not what you proposed. You proposed people to stay overnight several times.
Yes, yes, sir.
And those people need a place to park.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so set aside the use. So the, the addition you're planning, just the fellowship alone, requires by our code sixty parking spaces.
Yes.
So if the fellowship was packed to the gills at the same time the church was packed to the gills.
Even though that won't happen, that's what we have to plan for. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we have to plan for that, yeah. We have to plan for it.
Okay.
So just like we say, you know, when Omaha, we're going to make them not to turn certain ways out of that parking lot. If we're encouraging the shared parking that goes to a restricted access point, that's a bad plan. That's bad planning. We, we don't want to do that. We, we don't want to do that. We want to make sure we're planning
Sure.
The best case scenario of how to accommodate this, you know, packed to the gills situation.
Okay.
We want the church to be successful. There's no one in this room that doesn't want to be successful.
I understand.
Our job is to plan for them to be that successful.
Sure.
But I just, for, for, for my commission's sake, you have testified under, you know, under the record here multiple times that the intent was to be overnight accommodations. That's different than living. I would agree with you. But neither are permissible in our code.
Sure.
Be good.
If, if I may add, you have to establish the occupant load for the existing church and the occupant load for the addition that you've been proposing. Then when you combine the occupant load of the two buildings, then you come up with a number of parking spaces that you're going to be required.
Okay.
Now, if you need additional parking spaces for your neighbors, you have to figure out how many, what's the occupant load of the building next door, the church next door, how many parking spaces that they have, and if they have any that they can share with you. So there's a whole process that has to go through there.
Okay. That's fine. We'll, we'll do that. We'll provide that. And if it doesn't work, then we'll build more parking. I mean, we've got, there isn't like there's a shortage of land, you know, so.
So it sounds like one issue you, you feel like you could probably deal with that. I guess, I know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see parking being a, being a problem. And we'll get those numbers from the, from the Methodist Church, find out what their requirement is, add them up. Yeah, if we don't have enough, we'll build more. We'll put them on a plan.
You can do that in a simple, simple tabular format?
Oh, yeah.
And then it'll, it'll tell the, it'll tell the story it needs to tell, whatever it may be.
Yeah, not a problem.
And I guess theirs would be not necessarily what they pull in on a typical week. It's what.
No, you're saying when they're, if they were thumping too, right?
Right.
It's a capacity.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that's how it works at businesses and shopping malls and all that. That's, that's why you have 1,000 empty spaces in every shopping mall because they never fill them up. But I get it. So, that's fine.
Well, and then again, that, you know, I don't mean to monopolize time, but that is why the city has a provision for show.
No, I understand.
Because they, you know, they do recognize that often sites are overparked.
It can happen.
Yeah, so we just, we need to just be very careful that, because the first, believe it or not, the first person they call, they're not calling you as a designer, they're calling him complaining, or the mayor.
Call the city, right, yeah, right. I get it.
Or their councilperson.
Sure.
And he gets the short end of that stick. So we just have to do our jobs.
Sure. No, I get it. That's fine. And we'll do that. We, we'll, I'll, I'll gather that information up. That's not that hard to do. So.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Have, have, where are the discussions so far with the Methodist? Have there been any discussions with the Methodist?
Oh, yeah. There's already a written agreement that they're okay with sharing parking, but that's as far as it went. It never went.
Did, did we see that agreement?
I don't think you have, no.
And why, why wasn't that submitted?
It just, that's my fault. I, they have it. I actually saw it and I did ask for them to give me a copy of it. But I will, like I said in here, I will get, anything that there is that's, that's a necessary part of making sure everybody's on the same page and everybody understands everything will be submitted for everybody's review. Nobody's trying to hold anything out.
And the, the other thing is, I, I think that when we do restaurants and things like that, they figure out how many seats there are.
Right.
And if the restaurant, only three people ever showed up, even though there are 30 seats, you have to have parking based on how many seats there are.
Right.
So it's irrelevant to how many people are actually using the place.
Right.
So we have to figure out how much of your whole church is, and then this, this hall, how many will that hold? So that, that's why, why we need all the parking. And if you say you've got plenty of land, you could do the whole.
Oh, yeah, we can, we can.
I think. Maybe that's the way to do it.
Well, every parking space you put in, then the water retention goes up.
And, and the last thing is.
We have the room, so.
Why do you have to have a left turn and a right turn onto 82? Why, why do you need both?
I, I, I don't, that's something that happened with the, our, our, the church's driveway is either way, right? And the existing drive to the Methodist Church on that side of the property is right only. I think that's what you say. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Cox, they only have one access on Route 82. Gregorios does.
How about the Methodist that they have?
Well, they have two.
Oh, they have another way.
The access that the Methodist Church has that's closest to Gregorios is the restricted access.
I get you.
It's right in, right out only. So fear is anybody that's parked at the Methodist Church, at least anywhere on the west half of the Methodist Church property. If they want to make a left on 82, they're going to cut through this access drive.
Sure.
Cut through Gregorios and make a left on the 82, which is, which is bad.
Is there other, I don't know this, but is there other drive?
Both directions.
Is both, is both way.
We need to have the ability somehow to make a left in or a left out.
Okay. Okay. Well, if, if I could, I think with some of the, the issues that you brought up in the previous thing, I think I answered most of them in the notes that I gave you tonight. That the, first, that the concept of the retreat center has been abandoned and there are no guest suites, they understand. The large circle symbol in the, is the standard way of illustrating a five-foot diameter circle for handicapped circulation. That, that's all that circle in the, in the toilet room means. It, it is free of obstructions for turning of a wheelchair. The thing with the exit sign, that was more of a note for me, but the whole point of that is when you're in the classroom, meeting room building, there are certain requirements for the code for egress and distance of travel. And you don't want to go from one area into a, I can't think of the word I want. I think it's lesser restrictive or a, or a more restrictive area. So when you're exiting that, there will not be an emergency exit, exit sign above those two doors. The doors are there and I said, and here's how, here's what I said. Where did I say it now? The use of the term no exit was, was illustrated that this door, not a, not a means of exit in an emergency, but it does not restrict the flow of persons between the two spaces. So, and I see a typo here. It is not, there is no emergency exit sign or emergency lighting on those doors. There is free and unobstructed access from one space to another. So you can go from the church to the meeting rooms, to the fellowship hall, to the meeting rooms, to the church, any way you want. But if there's an emergency and an alarm sounds and the lights go on, there won't be an emergency exit sign there because you don't want to be leaving the meeting rooms, going back into the church. You just want to go outside. So that's all that no exit meant. Okay, the next thing was, well, I said that. The kitchen at the back of the fellowship hall is not an expansion. It is only referred to as future because the church cannot afford to purchase all the equipment at this time. And there I said at the bottom, by taking your previous comment into consideration regarding the excessive width of the payment, we extended the existing planning area and added three new parking spaces to our total. But that'll get reconsidered now anyway, since we're going to add everything together. I said at the top of the next page, the classroom meeting space will not be used as guest suites. And I did refer to the time thing there. In my next paragraph, there will be no church service at the same time as the fellowship hall is used. But that's irrelevant because you want the parking based on the entire use of all the square feet. So we'll, that's not a problem. We'll get that. And there I mentioned the driveway, the 22. We changed the width of the driveway to 22 feet. And we'll get that shared parking agreement and the detail of it. We'll get together with, and we'll get you a copy of that. Nobody's trying to hide anything. And I put a note here that the preliminary framing plans were added back in. And I said, and this is my own fault because I didn't look, but I don't really know what, why they were missing unless it was a computer thing when I sent it to the printers, because I don't do any of my own printing. And we will provide, and I think I said that here, we will provide at the, for approval for the board, we have every intent of providing complete construction documents, including stormwater management, utilities, lighting, landscaping, paving, et cetera. As I mentioned at the last meeting, getting the preliminary approval from this board is so important to the church because of the financing, because the financing can't get, and the interest rate stuff can't get nailed down until they know they have a project. And they don't know they have a project until they get the, the preliminary approval from this board. So. And I brought a bunch of samples of things. I don't even know if we, if you want to go through that or leave these now. I included on the back of the thing, these five renderings. There's a couple from the ground and a couple from the air because the issue was raised specifically in one of the notes about how the roof plane of the classroom, meeting room wing meets the south end of the existing church building. And she, is it Pam, I think Schultz, Pamela, was asking for an axiometric, axiometric drawing to show how that's happening. And so we made all these views up. And the, the middle one of the five, I think, specifically shows the intersection of those two things. And I don't think it's an issue because the classroom, meeting room wing is low enough that the roof of it just runs into the back wall. So there isn't any complicated thing with the roof pitches running into each other. Yeah. So I don't know if I covered everything there.
I guess one, one issue that I still have is, is just, just the general use, you know, what's now being called the classrooms.
Yep.
Knowing what their intention was before, knowing that we've still got essentially the same number of rooms, that are the same size that, you know, could easily be some way down the road, you, you drop a bed in there and it's a, it's a, it's a overnight stay place. I, I, I know what you're saying, you know, is, is their current intention. But I really feel like we need to make sure that the, the church themselves understands that this is not, that's not an acceptable use. That they, you know, for them, I would like to honestly see them on the record say that they recognize and they understand that that's not an allowable use.
Well, I put a, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. I'm sorry. I put a paragraph at the end of one of my pages where I said, "The retreat center has been completely eliminated. The church has no problem issuing a statement that there will not be any living units in the church." They're, they're, boy, do I, I'm a loud typer. Holy mackerel. There never have been any living units. There was never intention of living units and there will not be any living units. Now, I don't know what, I don't know what else to say because, like I said, churches do that where they have overnighters. My wife has been to a half a dozen or a dozen of them. So I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what else to say. I can't think of anything. They don't.
Living units in, in.
If you're saying it's absolutely essential that they never have a youth retreat or kids spending the night in the gym on a dozen sleeping bags, I don't understand what, is that what your intent is? You absolutely do not, do not want, under any circumstance, anybody ever staying overnight in that building. Is that the?
I think we're saying it's not allowed to have facilities set up for that intention. Like the overnight stay locations. I mean, calling them living units is, is
Well, I looked it up.
Different than what, okay, let, let me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
Calling them living units, we, we're, you know, there's two things. Yeah, it's, living units are not allowed. Overnight stay, you know, rooms that are almost like a hotel type thing are not allowed in this area. Mr. Francis, if, if I'm messing something up here.
No, I think, I think you're on the, on the right track and, and this commission has never said that you can't have youth events where kids stay overnight. They've, they've never openly stated that to you in any of their conversations on the record. In fact, I think I shared my conversation, my own personal story, that I, I attended overnight youth events at my church and there were no showers. But it was, it was a common practice. And so the city of Macedonia is not restricting them from doing those functions. But you have openly stated since day one of your application and, I guess rightly so, or not, argued on behalf of your client to include them. So it's very evident that that was the intent. And then it switched pretty quickly to meeting rooms with bathrooms with a shower in the middle. And what I'm telling you from a youth standpoint, the commission can tell me if I'm wrong, but my, my strong opinion is, based on this code, it is not a necessary use, customarily incidental to the main use of a church in Macedonia.
Okay.
And so I don't believe that you can maintain those showers on your plans.
Okay, that's fine. Take them out.
Be compliant with this code.
Not a problem.
Mr. Will. I ask you a question.
Yes.
Are you still planning to go to the border zoning appeals for a variance to keep the overnight?
No.
So you, you are getting away from that request.
Well, that, that's why they said, "Take them out." We don't want, we don't, we don't need that. And if, and if I say, "We'll take out the showers," then we'll take out the showers.
Because the last conversation we had, you were moving forward with that.
Right.
Okay, so that's no longer in place now.
No, I called them up right, I called them up right after you and I got off the phone.
Okay.
And I said,
Okay.
"We're going to throw another month or two delay into this project and probably get turned down anyway based on what we're hearing." So what's the point? And they said, "Take them out. We won't do it."
Okay, thank you.
And, and it was my choice to put the showers in. Because I, and I think that's only because of my experience with, because I, I've been going to a mega church, if you will, I'm sorry, for 40 years. And gymnasium, there's a gymnasium there besides the fellowship hall and they have locker rooms with showers because they have basketball leagues. I mean, they do, you know, it's a big deal with the athletics.
Sure. And that may be, very well may be customarily incidental to churches in that particular community, but it's not in Macedonia.
Right, no, I understand. Right.
And just to, just again, just for the records purpose, this commission in no way is, intends to infringe on your client's right to practice religion.
No, right. We under, they understand that.
It's not the case. We recognize and appreciate the federal law. This is really a use issue at a local level that, that prohibits what you have proposed relative to those overnight accommodations.
So we'll take the showers out. If that, I mean, like I said earlier, if that's a hangup, because they want to do the project, they want, just for the record, the fellowship hall was the beginning of this whole thing. And that was it. The idea of the, of the, what did we call it? Retreat center was secondary to the fellowship hall. That's what they really want, the fellowship hall. And when we were in very early discussions about the planning of the project, it was going to be right up behind the church. And Father James was concerned that if the fellowship hall was that big, in order to make it work right on the inside, the roof had to be higher than the roof of the church. And I don't know if this is a psychological thing, but he didn't want a bigger building overshadowing the church building. So he said, "How far back do we have to move it before it wouldn't look like it was overshadowing the church building?" And I said, "You'd probably have to go back 50, 80 feet, maybe 100 feet before the perspective of it is going to be back far enough that it won't look like it." I said, "We can put a low enough pitched roof, but it's going to be pretty hard to not make it higher than the, the church building." And he said, "So how do we get there?" I said, "You walk out the back and you go across the parking lot and you go in." He said, "I don't want, I don't want people to be able to be inside the whole time they're doing that." And I said, "Well, the only way to do it is build a hallway." And so I drew this thing on paper. And he said, "What are we going to do with that?" And I said, "You can do anything you want to with it." And that's when he came up with the idea of the retreat center because they've had retreats at the church. Nothing overnight, but they've had people come for weekends, but they come and they go home. And then they come and they go home the next day. And he said, "Boy, it'd be really nice if they could just stay overnight." And that's where that whole thing
Sure.
Kind of blew up out of nowhere.
If I can, Mr. Sheriff, I can just, may just bring some closure to the topic a bit for the sake of, I think that remove all the, the showers is required because that use, I don't believe is customarily incidental to or associated with the main use of a church in Macedonia. I think you've acknowledged that that's acceptable. I think you've acknowledged that that's acceptable. This commission would need to see a plan that eliminates those. And I think, given lots of the confusion, it's been, no blaming one person, there's been confusion.
Sure.
And so given that, I would suggest to the commission that they continue the matter till a date when you think you're able to perform the, the things that we've talked about tonight, the studies of the parking and the access, as well as providing a set of plans that don't include the showers. And when the, someone from the church can come and speak to the application.
Okay.
That'd be my suggestion.
One other thing, do you think that, uh, some of the things Pam brought up, maybe some plans that would, if she wanted a certain type of, uh, our, our architect, you saw-
Right, yes.
Uh, you might include that in there so we don't have to continue it again.
Sure, yeah, I can, I got the piece, so I'll just write everything down.
That'd be great.
I'll spell it all out. Yep.
Couple of comments I have in regards to when you're studying the plan or when you're looking at the plan in terms of removing those, those showers. I think you should look at the restrooms combined. Because again, those restrooms, you know, you had stated that they needed more space for classrooms and such. Well, putting those restrooms right in the middle of those classrooms takes up a bunch of space. You could combine the restrooms for the fellowship hall and these classrooms and let them share.
Yeah, except they don't want, they don't want me to do that. They want it to be able to lock the door when the fellowship hall is in use so that nobody can use the rest of the building.
But there's ways to do that by creating double doors on each side of those so that you can combine those restrooms so that it doesn't sit right in the middle of there.
Okay.
And the other-
I'll talk to them about it, sure.
You know, they, each one of those classrooms, uh, still show individual P-TAC units.
Yeah.
I would recommend not, I mean, I would recommend looking at different HVAC systems. Those aren't residential units anymore or overnight units. There's no reason for them to each have their own individual control.
That's fine.
If you put a whole HVAC system in, there's, there's ways to control that as well.
Oh, sure. Yep.
And then something else you had mentioned was just, you know, before, the connection between these two buildings, you know, the last time I believe you were here, you had told us that, you know, you created open air going to there, and now we have that connection there. So-
Right.
Just something to think about and also potentially looking, looking at maybe flipping the two or flipping kind of where that, that corridor occurs, moving that to the front so you don't have like the, you provide more of an open air feeling to the parking lot. You're not looking directly at the back of, what, what it almost looks like is the back of the building where the parking lot is.
Okay. Okay. I'll talk to them about that. I don't, I'm not sure I understand that, but there's windows in the back and windows in the front, so what, I don't-
Just saying the orientation of the plan so that-
No, I understand. I understand what he's saying, but I don't, I'm not sure I see why it makes any difference where the hallway is, but-
You have a set of doors that are now on the back of the building that are going in for those classrooms. Wouldn't it make more sense to have those doors on the front?
Well, they wanted to have that, they want, no, because it wasn't, the double doors were out to that, that nature garden retreat area. And they wanted, if they're having Sunday school classes or Bible study classes and they want to go out, they wanted to be able to go into that hallway and go outside into a back, not outside into a parking lot. I mean, from a function standpoint, I understand what you're saying, but from a function standpoint, it works either way whether the court, whole corridor is in the front or the back. But they wanted to be able to have that, that private, they're really talking about landscaping, maybe a water feature, a fountain or something in that courtyard in the back. And they wanted it to be removed from the parking lot, not to be exposed to it.
Okay. I just think there's some options now to really reinvestigate this whole plan that it's not, now that it's just gonna become classrooms. Share services with restrooms and such so that they're not specifically kind of for that classroom area. They could share restrooms with the, the fellowship hall and such.
But the eliminating of the showers is the issue. How they want to use the bathrooms is, that's up to them, right?
Well, it goes back to the comment that you said, that they wanted more, as many classrooms and as much space as possible. So I think if you were to combine those bathrooms, it would make more sense from a-
Well, I'll talk, I'll, I'll-
They're building, they're building multiple things that could share-
Sure.
Could share the same use and then gain them another classroom at the end of the day.
I'll ask them what they want to do. I'll talk to them about it.
Okay, and I think the, the biggest takeaway from all that is, yeah, we'd have a much better feeling with some of the technical issues that are in, in the memos, the parking, the, all, all the things that Mr. Francis had mentioned. And then having somebody here from the church to address this and to, on the record, recognize, you know, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Mm-hmm.
Would, would, I think, go a long way, uh, to the commission.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
Make the motion. Yeah, so all, uh-
Another month.
If we continue, would you want it to be January? Is that-
Well, I think, uh, is the submission this Friday?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Yeah, let's plan on it.
Okay.
Because if we don't, then it's February. And we're already three months behind now, so.
I'll make a motion to continue this to the January meeting to address, uh, issues brought up in the memos related to staff.
I'll second that.
Mr. Francis, does that sound like some, some good motion?
Yeah, that was a good motion. You know, if I can just add my two cents, um, it's helpful if you just provide one comprehensive document. I know you're under the gun to try to get your submission in, but, um, it's, don't take this wrong way, it's a bit self-inflicted on that front. And so for us to provide a full evaluation, it would be nice to, to really see this all at once, come in a complete submittal package. So the study of the parking, analysis of parking of the adjacent property. If you think you can do that by Friday, great.
Well, I'm gonna try. I'm still married, so.
Okay.
For now. She hasn't left me yet.
All right, any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
There is, uh, Valley Meadow Estates.
Before you start it, we have, uh, updated plans and responses to the comments. I brought ten copies.
Okay, and we, and we can take these, I can't guarantee that we can-
I understand. Yeah, make a ruling on the stuff that hasn't been- That's fine. It's just, you know, responses to all the memos and then just, uh, a latest copy of the plan with some, some minor adjustments that's in there as well.
Great. Uh, Mr. Francis, would you like to go over your comments first when you get settled there?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my report dated December eighth, and the applicant did hand out yours, um, looks like some comments to my comments, so I'm sure they're gonna walk through that. But I'll just, because this is what we have to go with tonight, I'll walk through my comments.
Of course.
And you guys can just address them accordingly. So, as, as, I think everyone's aware, this is a request to create a nineteen unit subdivision pursuant to Title I of the plan and zoning code. And so it's kind of a conceptual plan at this point. I'll just walk through some of these things to, that need to be addressed. So, um, survey, boundary survey, I mentioned previously that, um, we need, uh, an accurate representation of how much land we're dealing with. The deed, I think, shows one thing. The applicants say they're gonna be providing up the boundary survey. That's great. We can work on, I think, as a stand, work with what we have for now. If it impacts the layout or density, then we definitely address that issue. Same with the wetlands. You know, we've talked about this myself in the city engineer, the men's and just pensions before. There's wetlands showing on, um, a couple of the units. Obviously, you know, you need to pursue permits for that, and that information needs provided to the city for review. I think you probably, I think you said you have a wetland study, it's being finalized.
Correct.
So we'll, we'll need that. Again, if it impacts the layout of the subdivision, you know, we, we're gonna, obviously, we're gonna have to evaluate that. And that includes mapping the ordinary high watermark as relates to the repairing corridor and does that or doesn't, and impact the layout of the, the lot layout as presented. I don't know the answer to that. If it doesn't, that's great. If it does, then we'll just have to reevaluate things as we go down the line. Covenants restrictions, I'm sure you're in the process of finalizing those, so when you get draft covenants restrictions, submit those for, to the city for review. And then the one issue that's a little more action does need to be taken by the commission. Section eleven seventeen oh one K two caps the maximum road length for cul-de-sac at six hundred feet. I think by my scale, it looks like you're about seven hundred and ninety feet. I, I don't have a concern with that. That's really not that significant of a deviation. Other streets have been approved with lengths that exceed that six hundred feet. Um, it's just something that the commission does need to, to act on. And typically, the fire department engineer, oh, pine on that as well, but it's something the commission will need to formally take action on. And then, understanding again, type, uh, chapter eleven twenty-one does require streetlights, landscaping, um, the full sort of enchiladas that relates to planning out sublots. I know it's a bit early right now, and the applicant stated that, that, that information will be coming with the final plan submission. That's, that's fine. We'll evaluate it when it comes at that time. And then I guess the, the last thing, which is probably the most germane issue, is the opening space. So eleven twenty-seven oh three A two of the code does allow, um, the applicant to seek approval to submit what we call a, basically a payment in lieu of recreation. It's a certain amount of money per subplot. I suggested in my report that, um, the mayor and, and Randall or the recreation director provide some direction on that. I think the mayor, I've talked to him, the mayor has provided a direction writing to the commission that, um, he would rather have open space in the development and not the payment in lieu of. The way the code reads under eleven twenty-seven oh three B, the commission does have at its sole discretion, um, the approval authority of whether or not to accept the payment in lieu of or provide the dedicated open space within the development. So that's an issue that will have to be talked through here. I guess probably the most germane issue tonight as we look at the layout of the development. Um, it's the administration's position to have open space in the development and not the payment in lieu of. And I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. July?
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. All right, so, uh, just got my hands on the responses and read, uh, from you guys. So, so bear with me here as I'll try to work through this quickly, actually, twenty-three comments, so we'll do this as fast as we can. Uh, you guys are proposing a public road. Number two, stormwater management, so of course you'll provide the, uh, the detailed counts on that when we get to that point. A wetland study, Brian just talked about, you got it underway. So we'll need, uh, the study and, uh, the army, associated army for permitting, please. Uh, number four, repair and setback, Brian touched on that. Uh, and I do have a bit of a concern there, and I'm looking at the drawing that was just handed out, and units ten, eleven, and even twelve, I mean, the back of those houses are awfully close to the repair and setback, leaving just a few feet, uh, to grade or, or put a rear patio. So that is a little bit of a concern. Somehow we need to show a conformance with the repair and setback here, uh, on this plan, and, and that kind of piggybacks off showing the ordinary high watermark as well. So, uh, on your next submittal, if you could be more detailed on that, so, so we can all be assured we're meeting, uh, the requirements of the repair and setback. So that one is a concern. Number five, pavement section, it looks like you're, you're changing that to asphalt, so that's great. Uh, you show sidewalk on both sides of the road. Uh, number seven, roll curb, it looks like we're gonna go with, with, that would be appreciated. That would match every residential subdivision we have in town. Uh, so thank you. Eight is, uh, standard development agreement with the city. And nine is the stormwater agreement with the city. Those can be, uh, later, but we do need those prior to the final permitting. Cul-de-sac radius, uh, let's see here. Uh, it looks like you've increased the radius on the cul-de-sac. Is that the case?
That's correct.
All right, so that's probably a good thing. Permitting from county for sanitary, Cleveland Water for water. Uh, thirteen, perimeter drainage system, I think that's an important item too. Uh, and it looks like here, provided as part of final design, uh, you know, it is a storm sewer utility, so to speak. I'd ask you to show it on your next, uh, submittal here, your next plan, uh, as to how exactly you, you plan to do that. Uh, unit number thirteen looks like it might be a little bit tight along that back line. So if you could pay attention to how you're gonna handle number thirteen, so. But really, the perimeter all the way around of the site. Moving along here, decorative light poles, uh, you got that in there, I think. The kiosk, the mailbox kiosk, looks like you got rid of that.
Right.
Now with the elbow, you got rid of that whole setup, so that's probably a good thing there. That elbow was a little bit awkward, quite honestly.
So is there no mailbox kiosk anywhere at all?
Well, that, that'll be worked out with, uh, the post office. And we, we just thought that might have been a convenient place, but, uh, there's other options that we can pursue. It'll be ultimately their decision.
Yeah, Chairman, it'd be a little problematic to have a mailbox kiosk in a public right-of-way too. Yeah, we shouldn't have that. And the public, private right-of-way is a different story. They exist everywhere. Word really off, tree lawn. Uh, we had some weird tree lawns. There were some spots that looked like it was only two feet wide. That's,
Yeah, we-
Beats the purpose. It looks like you rearranged things. I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, we, we made the, the right-of-way for the cul-de-sacs, um, a larger diameter, a larger radius to keep the tree lawn uniform throughout the development.
That would be good.
So, so that amended plan, what, what's in front of you reflects that change.
All right, good. Yeah, that, that, that would be much better. I appreciate that. We need storm manholes. It looks like on your note here, you revised the layout, so we'll take a look at that. But, you know, especially in a public road, we can't have a situation where the storm sewer vein runs through the, the curb inlet catch faces, so.
Yeah, we changed that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Foot right-of-way. Uh, we got a water main crossing of Valley D Road. That's gotta be a bore. Let me see here. Okay, so it looks like you added a note for the Chabor under Valley D Road. Thank you. We just paved it.
Sorry about that.
Please don't chop it. Word really off. Uh, stormwater management, pond, we need an easement for that. Uh, it looks like you're adding an easement. HOA will be responsible. That'll have to be in the covenants and restrictions and, uh, in the stormwater agreement. Utility width, I'm calling it out there, yeah, twelve foot. Okay, that's standard. And then the last one was the curve there on the elbow. Looks like maybe in the modifications you made to the elbow, you've made that a, a little softer curve. Is that the case?
Yeah, I mean, just basically eliminating the island, so, you know, totally changes the, the way that's utilized. So I think, I would think that concern would, would go away.
Okay. All right, yeah, so I guess for me, the, the perimeter drainage system and the repair and setback really seem to be the two, the two main items here that need to be addressed, uh, that at least need to be addressed first or quickly, so. Sorry, I hope it wasn't too long, Chairman.
Mr. Cash? Do you have any, any thoughts on the, the length of cul-de-sac? Is that-
Um, according to the code, uh, from what we've actually did, we actually did maneuverability with the truck involved. It matches a circle out front here. And I measured this. This here is forty-four. But this is residential. You're gonna come across a parked car right when you don't need it there. So, and they did enlarge it.
Okay. And then does the length bother you at all, you're exceeding that six hundred feet by a little bit? I know we've done it in other-
No, I, I've, I've done no.
Okay. So I guess, eh, eh, I'm guessing, and you guys jump in, uh, probably the biggest thing is the open space issue is gonna probably mess with your plan a little bit.
Yeah, I, I guess to be frank, I'm kind of surprised by that comment. You know, for, for a development this size, that's conventional sized lots, um, to try to come up with a usable, um, nice open space area. There's nothing obvious that, that jumps out at me. Oh, this would be a- nice open space area, um, there's nothing obvious that that jumps out at me, oh, this would be a nice little park or playground. I guess we were thinking that a contribution to the city's existing recreation fund that could be used at a, you know, an established park or possibly to purchase additional parkland, you know, I'm not sure how the city handles that, so.
No, same issue, I was thinking of the same thing. I I had no idea we could overrule our mayor, that's kind of interesting. Don't forget, he does a point to all of us. What would you do? You have to eliminate a house or something, would, is that, if you had to do it?
Yeah, we'd we'd probably lose one or two lots. I don't know what that does to the feasibility of the project, that's something trees would have to analyze. And then, yeah, we just don't have a lot of flexibility the way the zoning code is written. If this were a PUD, um, which typically, I believe you need fifteen acres for a PUD. We don't have fifteen acres, so we don't qualify for a PUD. But a PUD would allow smaller cluster type lots, um, and then, that gives you room to facilitate open space. These are half acre lots, they're large size lots, and it's it's probably a little misleading, the footprints we show on the plan. Are like the maximum, all the options, you know, you got your sunroom, your back patio, a deck. The houses are, the actual footprints are gonna be smaller than what's shown on the on the plan. So, it's just really hard, you know, in this case, to try to facilitate an open space area that that is usable and makes any sense. I mean, I'm just, I'm struggling. If I if I had a a great idea, I, you know, we'd put it on the plan.
Okay, that answered my question. If I could.
Well, I would ask if, I mean, you have a a large detention area, I would ask, that was except, you know, it it currently, I see two lots kind of taking up
Sure.
that, and now that means that those people are gonna somehow be responsible for that detention area?
Well, they'll they'll be, there will be a homeowner's association.
Okay, oh.
And the homeowner's association is responsible for the, uh, routine inspection
Yeah.
of that facility and the maintenance.
Yeah, my sub has the same thing, but it's
So even though it's
common green space and it goes towards our open space.
So so there's an easement on, so even though that's part of that particular property owner's lot, there's an easement on that. And then, there's, there'll be a storm water maintenance, uh, management agreement that'll be on record with the city that spells out specifically who's responsible to maintain that, that will be spelled out and it'll be agreed at, you know, that'll be the the homeowner's association.
So that's not the responsible, I guess just because it is, uh, on someone's lot, even though it is, there is an easement, I guess, like, if someone were to get hurt on that, whose responsibility is that? Does that fall on the homeowner at that point because it's on their property?
The HOA has a umbrella policy for that.
Got it, okay.
And eh, because it's a common open space.
Okay.
The, yeah, so.
No, that's fine, I just, it was, I've run across it very few times, and this is the first time I've seen it, which I figured I asked the question.
Yeah, well, again, it's it's the zoning code that we're in, it requires half acre lots, so.
Right.
We don't really need a half acre lot to build the home that trees wants to build. That's really to meet the zoning and the setbacks and everything like that. So, if the lot sizes were smaller, say a quarter acre lot, or ten thousand square feet, something like that, we could probably put that storm water pond in its own open space area. But, to make the density work, to make eh, make sure every lot meets the half acre, and when I say half acre, I'm really talking about twenty thousand square feet, which is just like an inter-half acre.
Yeah.
To meet those minimum lot sizes, it just turns out that, you know, we have to take part of those sublots into the storm water pond area.
So another question I would have, Mr. Chair, sorry, I have a few anything else, but just so, again, and I know these are kind of the maximum footprints, but just looking at kind of where that repair and setback falls, so close to the back of some of those homes, how is that monitored in terms of, I mean, I know you guys aren't very, aren't gonna do anything, but how does that prohibit somebody from putting a structure up there? How is all that, like, monitored to make sure that nothing occurs within, like, how do the people, the homeowners know that that delineation occurs? Or is there fence that basically stops them from doing anything at that location? Is there, is there signage? How is all that monitored and really kept true from the repair and setback, from anything occurring in it?
The, uh, just a real quick note, is that when we, both the comment about the storm water management and the repair into the natural zone over here, we consider those assets to the community, to be honest with you. And the people who are gonna buy here are specific segmentation to the market, that want to be by the natural setting. And the way we protect it is that we're gonna get into an agreement with a a conservancy group called West Creek.
Okay.
And West Creek will monitor this on a quarterly basis, and, because we don't trust our homeowners either.
That's kind of where I'm getting at, like, we can all say that that nobody's gonna do anything there, but you know, as well, a homeowner, again, how does that get protected again?
Yeah, we do, we we partner with them a lot, especially in today's market, there's not much land available that's open farms, you know, just, there's a lot of boutique pieces like this that we want to put our upscale homes in. And so, we'll protect that with West Creek, they'll put signage on it, and they'll protect it as a natural area. So if people have to creep with their with their fire pit, or their kids jump around, uh, they'll report it immediately to them. And that's financed not by the city, that's financed by the homeowners. A percentage of each of their closing goes towards West Creek in perpetuity and a permanent easement.
Okay.
And as far as the setback, uh, Mr. Johnson was absolutely correct. Our, the home plans you saw, the ones we submitted, their maximum depth is sixty foot. And so, eh, he, some of these drawings are showing seventy, seventy foot, eh, we don't get that homes built that way. And these people who buy here will be specifically looking for that.
Right, okay.
And one other thought, the, as far as the the open space requirement, I'm not sure if there's a demarcation on on the quantity of lots that that becomes kicked in or it's an emotional thing, or if it's a judgmental or a subjective thing, but there's really only sixteen homes in this subdivision. I mean, there's three, uh, three of them are not actually inside the same road, they're they're having separate entrances, so the traffic is much reduced. There's even less room for us to create space to be open. We'd love it to be a PUD, and if we could find another, some acres adjacent, we would prefer that.
Kevin, can I ask, can we rule tonight on on whether they need an open space or not, or or suggest a cash in lieu of? Uh, I I think I would, I would push for that myself, cash in lieu of. It is not a PUD, and, uh, eh, eh, as my experience, as a PUD, they could do it a bigger, a a a bigger place than this. Can we rule tonight, what do you think? Instead of kicking this over?
I'm sure we could. I'm sure we could. Make, I mean, the that, the, there's two things that they know, eh, you at least need some guidance on for us, at the length of the road and and the open space. It would be nice to give them some guidance on. Yes, Mr. France, what, is there, is there any size thing, there's just the open space requirement, what kicks that in, that all developments?
Yeah, yeah, it's just also, it's ten percent of the land area, and there's, um, prep area for you to go by under eleven twenty-seven oh three B, one through four, eh, as you evaluate whether or not the payment in lieu of is acceptable or not.
Personally, I don't have a problem with the length of the cul-de-sac. The payment in lieu of, I'd like to take some time just to review.
What did you say, I couldn't hear you?
I don't have a problem with the cul-de-sac length. I just would like to review the payment in lieu of, though, because I haven't, that was.
I think that's sort of set, isn't it? Isn't that set, eh, eh, payment in lieu of, it's kind of in the code, how much it should be?
Well, it is, but there's also different, Brian, so there's, what was it, one through four, Brian?
Yeah, the the amount is set under eleven twenty-seven oh three A two. It's, the applicant is asking to do that, and the code says at sole discretion of the commission to determine whether that you will require it within the development or accept the payment in lieu of. And so, I think what Mr. Wallner is saying is he'd like to talk about that particular issue or study that more, not the dollar amount, which is the issue of providing within.
Who would want to talk about it more?
I think that's what he said, I could be wrong, Mr. Wallner's, I don't want to speak for him.
Yeah, no, I'd like to talk about it some more, I just wanna, I mean, I understand your guys' constraints, and I appreciate the larger lots, I really do, because I think that's.
Well, it sounds like a good development, and I think this would move it along, otherwise, it, as he said, it might not be feasible. Uh, they they have to take some big hunk out of there. We have sidewalks in there, which is a little unusual, and, uh, I I I'd kind of push for that myself. A payment in lieu, since it's set, the amount.
We we have empathy for the mayor's concern, and I think generally, as a global thought, we don't disagree with that. And and we've done a number of developments in this area, and Sagamore and here, and when we have the room to do it, we would would like to, but with only sixteen lots at half acre size, it's hard to work with that in this, kind of like a boutique, high-end community to find that.
Did you reduce your density down to sixteen?
Well, there's three that aren't inside the site, there's three that are actually.
Oh, yeah, but they're part of the subdivision.
Oh, I'm sorry, as far as calculations, of course.
Yeah, but they're part of the subdivision, they're subject to the same rules and regulations of subdivision.
Correct, they'll be inside the same HOA, yeah, same HOA.
Can I just ask, like, just a, so I guess that that lot that's that sits next to the storm water detention pond, that's twenty-four thousand seven thirteen, so twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five square feet?
What's number is that, sir?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Oh, thank you, gotcha, yeah.
Or twelve, I mean, we could look at kind of either one, I guess. What's that?
Yes.
My initial thought is just that that would make the most sense if we were to discuss further about doing an area. Would one of those lots meet that requirement for you? If you were to take and include, I'm trying to think of how to even, I'm trying to move some of this around a little bit, but like, if you were to only lose one of those lots and then take that area and include it, does that meet the open space requirements for you or not?
I would have to ask Mills to calculate that, I I don't know.
Yeah, I think we're looking at, you know, ten percent, so.
One point two acres?
You know, we're looking at
Two lots, yeah.
You know, that's two lots.
Okay. Now, do we have the discretion to just ask them to do a portion of one, or is it all or nothing? What's that?
I think it's all or nothing.
I kind of thought so, too, but I was trying to.
Split the baby.
Yeah, I'm kind of torn, I I'll be honest with you guys, I'm kind of torn on it, too, and that's why I'm kind of saying, like, well, maybe there's a way we could.
I mean, in in reality, what you have is, you do have the storm water pond, and it has an easement.
Right.
And it's controlled by the HOA, there's various documents in place, so even though it's part of those sublots, in reality, it's gonna look like open space, it's gonna, that's what it's gonna be.
The spirit of the area.
And and you see, have the same thing with the repair and setback, that's gonna be managed, controlled by a third party. It's gonna be in the deed restrictions, that they can't do anything back there. So, you know, we're we're just talking technicalities, okay, this property owner, fee simple, they own out to the the back of the property, the center of the creek, but they really can't do anything with that land, it's an easement, it's protected.
Yeah.
So what's the, you know, is there a difference or distinction between that and actually platted open space? Yeah, but it's essentially achieving the same result.
So you're saying this this dog leg right here
Yeah.
is the spirit of the
You know, if if the lot sizes were more flexible in a PUD, we would just call that all open space.
Right, no, and I don't disagree with you guys at all, I really don't, um, so, I guess, eh, I guess, here's another thought I had, and just, again, trying to kind of meet what everybody's trying to get to here, if you were to shift, and it, and I'm not trying to create a huge issue here, but since these are almost your largest, you know, your largest footprints, I mean, seventy-three feet by seventy feet, again, like you had said, that's like max
It is.
patio, everything, is there any reason why you couldn't take and shift all of this a little bit this way and gain a little bit more space over there? Does that, I guess what I'm wondering is, does it buy you closer to that without?
I mean, we we can, we can shrink the footprint of the units, the buildable footprint, but the lot sizes, those are
No, I'm saying move, like, everything up, like, totally.
You mean the street?
These lots are twenty thousand square feet, they're minimum sized lots, we can't take any real
We have a minimum width, right? And then, the square footage.
Hundred feet by twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah, sorry, that wasn't.
Yeah, the shape of the parcel was.
I know, eh, it's not, I get, I completely get it, and I'm just, um, I'm not disagreeing with you guys, I'm just trying to see if there's a a way to meet what everybody wants, and I don't know if there is.
Yeah, if I could, chairman, if I could jump in for a second. There's there's been a little more discussion on the repair and setback, and the wetlands, and the detention pond, and I I kind of feel like what we need on your next submittal is a preliminary grading plan, because that's what we don't really have yet. You know, how is all this gonna work? How are we gonna make the repair and setback requirements work? How are you gonna make the detention pond work? Where are you gonna outlet it? Uh, you're showing part of the detention pond in the repair and setback, I I don't think that's gonna be allowed, because I'm sure you're gonna have to build a berm on the low side of the pond, and you can't fill in the repair and setback. Can't can't place fill into the repair and setback.
You're correct, I mean, there are restrictions, I I, from what I recall.
I I, oh, I'm sorry, I I guess what I'm saying is, I think a preliminary grading plan might help answer a lot of these questions that everybody's bouncing around the room here tonight.
Yeah, giving, I guess, yeah.
Well, except it doesn't really solve the, uh, I mean, the big question is the open space question.
But if you guys end up having, I think what, what, uh, Mr. July is getting at, is that if you do end up having anything that's gonna change your grading plan, you might lose a lot or two anyways, correct?
Well, these, our our footprints are being shown much deeper than our homes really are.
Right.
But it's the, it's the grading as it relates to the wetlands and the repair and, I mean, we we don't have a sense about confident you are that you're gonna get those lots as shown.
You mean as far as making the water flow the way that the engineer would like it to see it flow?
Well, you're impacting wetlands potentially.
Right.
So are you gonna be able to get approval to do that?
Yeah, I mean, that's
And we don't even know that these are the actual wetlands, I think this is just a
Right.
kind of a preliminary line, it could be a lot more or a lot less.
This was based on a preliminary assessment by the, uh, qualified wetland consultant. But you're right, it still has to go through the review and the jurisdictional approval, and then the the permit, but you know, honestly, I mean, there's there's steps to this process, and, you know, trees has to make a decision on whether they're gonna go forward with this project and and buy the property, and, you know, we we need some sort of preliminary okay, and then we get into the engineering studies. And if if it comes to the stage where, hey, we just can't make this work, we'll have to come back. Just like Mr. France said earlier, that there might be things that come out of the wetland study or detailed design that causes us to come back with a revised preliminary plan, maybe we have to shift the street, maybe we do lose a lot. But, you know, we, you know, this is something that, you know, I've got thirty years' experience, trees has done quite a few projects over the years. We make good judgments based on our experience, we think this will work, I can't guarantee everything will work once we do our detailed design, but we we need to go through the process, and preliminary plan is one step of that, so. We'd like to get past that stage so we can move forward with the more detailed, uh, finalizing the wetlands, grading, storm water design, and and all that.
And we recognize we're taking the risk. By asking you to do a preliminary approval, we realize we're immediately making, and the next step is expenses, three-dimensional engineering, which we realize if it doesn't work, we're the ones who lose. And we're re-submitting, so we're actually losing more time by taking that risk. But having done this over forty years, I'm, I feel, we've spent a lot of time reviewing this, this is about our first iteration of this, and we we feel comfortable that it's going to work, but, you know, we'll take the risk.
We have to make that determination tonight on the payment in lieu of?
Well, I, they want a decision to know if that's gonna be acceptable or not, because otherwise, they have to try to figure out how it can work. And if it can't, then they're gonna potentially walk on the development. Gives you, you know, there's the other option of, uh, you can propose a dedication of a separate parcel outside of the subdivision to the city for public use. I don't know if you have any extra land laying around, but that's an option as well, under eleven eleven twenty-seven oh three A one.
We appreciate that thought. I I don't, I don't know my inventory has.
I'm just putting it out there, it says it.
You're responsible.
It does say that, yeah.
And you, um, have you considered meeting with the mayor, too, to talk to him about the issue?
Well, you know, we hadn't, because we thought this was the decision-making board, that, you know, that we know there's dominoes, we don't like to go outside those dominoes, because that's, the guys that do that are usually the ones you won't talk to the next day. So, you know, we're following the rules.
I think on this issue, I don't know if anybody here else here would have a, I wouldn't have a problem with you talking to the mayor directly, to get his concerns, talk to him about your concerns, see if you, you know, because we we, when he has the
Talk to him about your concerns, see if you, you know, because we, we, when he has an opinion on something like this, we, we take it seriously. He's seen all these developments, he hears the complaints, he hears what people like and what they don't like. You know, when he weighs in on something, we try to. So we couldn't do the preliminary plan tonight if, if we, we wouldn't be able to do that until they talk with the mayor about this whole thing.
Could it be conditioned upon the mayor's approval?
Possibly.
I guess, I would just like to hear what his reasoning, that's why I'm, I'm a little hesitant, is because usually, again, like Mr. Westbrook said, when the mayor kinda steps in or has an opinion, if there's a reason for it, I'd like to know what that reason was. If he had presented it to us or if we knew, it might waver one way or the other, but I think hearing what that reasoning is would.
It could be consistency, it could be to try and keep this in, in all these areas. I know the payment probably doesn't turn out to be a whole lot of any. I mean, it's like less than eight thousand dollars, it doesn't go too far towards the recreation department, it's like a slide or something.
Why don't, I have an idea, Kevin. Why don't I make a motion? And at least we'll have it, and so the mayor will know at least one person thinks they ought to do a payment in lieu of. And I, and we put that on there and you could, you know, we can overrule it, but at least you'll have that when they talk to the mayor and we'll have that on there. And I would make that motion, that would, they would take a payment under the code in lieu of, uh, uh, a, uh, an area set aside. So I'd make that motion and then we can ru- rule on it. At least, at least we have that part in there, and that'd be my motion.
Chairman, if you do that and it doesn't pass, does that eliminate the option?
I don't know if we can discuss it right now with their motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor, so you need to either rescind the motion or get a second for the purpose of discussion.
Um, I'll second so we can, we can have discussion on it. I guess, one, is that even something that we do a motion for has become? I guess, is that, is that appropriate, or has that become part of a, or is it, it's fine to do something like that?
Well, the member has a right to make a motion, and if it gets seconded, you have discussion. If it doesn't, it fails or dies on the vine, that's okay too. There's nothing that precludes you from making another motion to revisit the issue during the same meeting. If your intent is, you just wanna send a message to the mayor that you think it should be dedicated, just ask, um, the board secretary to include that in a minutes, or shoot him an email and say, hey, I think it should be allowed as payment in lieu of. That's another.
Well, either way, that's why I like to send the message. I, I think that'd be the way, at least have one vote in favor of. Because this is a small development and my idea with a, a, a PUD would, would be the one, you'd do it with a larger development, like the one across the street, the Kowlins one or something. But this one, uh, I don't think it's necessary to take a lot out of here. So that would be, I don't know if we make it a motion or put me on the record of saying that.
You have, you have a motion that's seconded, and if that motion fails, it doesn't preclude you from revisiting the issue. That's, alright, not a problem.
What if we're tied tonight?
Well, yeah, there's only four of you.
There's only four of us and.
But in most jurisdictions, a tie is the same as a failure.
Well, yeah, they wouldn't have three yes votes.
Correct.
They would need three yes votes.
So, without a law director here, and I'm certainly not a lawyer.
I would say we would need to defer to the city charter, and I don't have that readily available to determine what happens in the sake of a a two-two. I know in another community, a two-two means that no action was taken, and by their charter, it sends, it sends an affirmative vote to, um, the council. So I think it probably, it might be discussed in the charter, and I wouldn't wanna say otherwise without looking at it.
Sure.
Maybe we could defer, uh, a ruling until we get a full board. You, you could put that in our record, maybe, that I made the motion, it's been seconded, but uh, the board decided to defer it until they talk to the mayor.
We have a motion on the floor, you have to take action on it tonight. So whether, if you wanna withdraw your motion and then withdraw the second, or take a vote.
Alright, take a vote.
Can we have a little more discussions first before we do that? You okay with?
Sure.
So, just, just looking at that section, eleven twenty-seven oh three, is it, is it actually our sole decision? Or does it have to go to council? As I'm reading this. If we determine it's inappropriate, the, uh, planning commission may recommend that council may allow. And there's reference later about planning commission may recommend to council who, in making the final decision, shall consider the following.
Where, where are you reading from?
So eleven, eleven twenty-seven A, eleven twenty-seven oh three A.
A, may recommend. And council may allow.
One of the following.
Yeah, Chairman, it does, does kinda sound like planning commission makes a recommendation to council.
Is that, or is that something completely different?
Right here. Planning commission may allow one of the following options, and then we go down to B. Has the same phrasing.
That's under A, huh?
A and B.
Let me read you what A says. In the event this determined by the planning commission to be inappropriate for the subdivider to de- to dedicate any of the land shown in the subdivision plan or general development plan to, to the public for the uses and purposes provided for in this chapter, the planning commission shall. Now, I've been here almost twenty years, I've been here almost twenty years, we've never amended that section of the code. So I'm not sure how it says something different online.
Yeah, says maybe.
I know, I'm reading from the book that I was provided twenty years ago, and it's never been amended. So I don't know why it says that. Well.
It's another one of those hotel things?
Yeah. Uh, it looks like there was an amendment in two thousand nine. I'm not familiar with it.
So it sounds like it's another, something that we did not see, but.
We're so happy to have brought that to your attention.
Yeah. We had the same issue last year, right? Actually, I think it's this meeting, to be honest with you.
You have a diligence period, I'm assuming, to close on the property?
Those are considerations that we, you know, we internally, you know, measure.
But I guess what I'm asking you.
It's aggressive.
Just trying to be direct with you.
It's aggressive.
Is January gonna be?
Yes, it's a first of the year thing.
Make a break, okay.
That's, that's not public record, so.
Sure.
Well, it's published record now, but we'll ask the, the many volumes of people watching, which are probably not in Europe. To strike it from the record.
That one guy is watching.
Nobody, nobody listened to it tomorrow, yeah.
Did I understand correctly that if you were to say yes, it goes on to council? Is that what you're suggesting, sir?
It appears that that's the.
Then there's no harm in going ahead, passing it, and then we go talk to the mayor, because it's gonna go to council. Is that what I understand?
Yeah, I know, it's the first I'm, yeah, I'm seeing that language.
Because we'll gladly go talk to the mayor.
Is there any other, I wonder if there's any other revisions in that, uh, we're gonna see, may I recommend and council may allow? And then, in your copy under B, it says the planning com- commission may recommend to council who, in making, no.
That's why I was scratching my head where the council thing came from. Maybe it did get amended, I mean, I'm getting slightly older. So I forget some things. It was two thousand nine, I started here in two thousand six doing the work.
I empathize with your aging.
I, I generally remember things, and I'll make notes in my book, and I have updates to it, I, I don't know.
Yeah, your, your book is usually the, uh, the, 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 the exact one. Yeah, so kind, it appears that council would have to approve this.
And when do they meet? What time, or how do they? They get on the agenda, they.
Well, the milestones, just to put out as a global comment, which may not exactly apply to me. The milestones in contracts often use this preliminary approval as a benchmark, because it, it really is a big deal. Forget the cul-de-sac length of this, just getting preliminary approvals like Bing, and then you move to the next phase. And that's typically a milestone we utilize in many of our contracts.
Can we do, can we do a conditional approval based on them having a conversation with the mayor and us being provided a some kind of a, a, a memo, I, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of a way to get to.
Mr. France, did I misinterpret it? But it's, if they pass it, it still goes in front of council.
Well, I haven't read that language that's online to really opine on that. But it sounds like there's some degree of council involvement, that it would go to council. So.
What, and the next step after planning commission?
You need to come back here with detailed final.
Right, so we do have that window of time to talk to the mayor, come back here and just reaffirm everyone's beliefs?
Yeah, I guess so, from my perspective, and I don't wanna put words in the commission's mouth, but they, they have some guidance here in the book. If they don't feel, based on the size, shape, or character of the parcel that you're proposing for subdivision, that it's that it's reasonable to expect ten percent open space in this development. Um, then they could make that recommendation, we'll clear up the other pieces of it where it goes after this.
Sure.
They could do that, um, but they could also say, well, we think that you can get ten percent, if you lose a, a lot or two, that's you know, no offense, that's not our problem.
Of course.
You have to deal with the code requirement. We don't think that not providing the land is, is responsible. So that, I hate to put that on you guys, but that is what you really need to kinda answer to the applicant. And there's four of you, so I guess it could be a two-two.
Yeah, and, and I guess looking at the plan, how many lots have you said this is?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, so it'd almost be two lots.
Yeah, it'd be twenty.
Two.
Yeah, I think that's probably a fair.
They would probably lose, probably lose twelve and thirteen, which I think that would take care of part of their problem if that stormwater detention could be in the repairing setback.
Ten percent.
I guess if, if this does have to go to council, if, if we were to approve it without the open space. Um, there would be the opportunity, I guess, for the mayor to, when it comes to council, to, to explain to them and to have them hear his reasons, uh, you know, if it's beyond, you know, just consistency, there's you know, whatever his reasons might be, uh, it would be an opportunity for him to give it to the final order.
Of course.
Um, the only thing is, that's gonna, you know, when that happens, it's probably even setting you back even further, because I don't know what the council meetings.
We, we have, we have no more council meetings the rest of this season. We've canceled the second council meeting for this month. You would get this in front of us before, um.
Second Thursday of January.
Thursday in January.
Well, there's multiple milestones in my world, and I kinda shared what the first one was, and then we did the next milestone, we have time. So I also would share, if we were to give up these lots here for some reason, there's really no public use of those lots, because during covered we would not mitigate the wetlands, because we no need to do it. So they really would not be any sort of public use land anymore. So I'm just kinda sharing. It was a very difficult piece to work with.
Understood.
Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to say, I don't think it's fair to have the applicant going to the mayor, and the mayor is well aware of the project. He knows how many units are here, he knows pretty much everything about this project. He made a clear statement that he'd rather have green spaces rather than a compensation. Now, I don't know what, what you applicant can tell him that's gonna change his mind.
Oh, sure.
That's a good point.
So, I mean, just putting him on the spot, I don't think it's fair. I think that, you know, this body has to make a, a, a cha- a chance. I mean, a vote here, either, you know, yes or no, and we move forward with this.
Either way, I'm looking at the code, we're supposed to make a recommendation not to the mayor, but to a council that require the subdivision, it would be, provide sufficient funds, uh, that we may recommend to council. Those should consider, because of the size, shape, and character of the parcel will be subdivided, the recreational is impractical or undesirable to dedicate ten percent of the land for public use. That's the way the code reads. So we apparently make the recommendation not to the mayor, uh, and I, I'm not sure how he got into it, but, uh, it's to council that it would be impractical to do that. That's the way the, it's eleven twenty-seven oh three, uh, B.
Can I, can I ask a dumb question? I mean, has the mayor seen the actual plan, or is this?
He has, yeah.
Okay, so he's looked at the, the layout?
Yeah.
Because I wasn't aware of this comment until tonight.
Yes, he is.
And I'm trying to find where, where public space could be created here amongst a, a few of my lots.
Actually, the way the code reads, I don't see mayor, it says council.
Well, the council gets the final decision, but, you know, we take input from the engineer, the planner, the mayor, if he has some kind of fire department.
Council has always been gonna look to the mayor for an opinion.
And the mayor comment came from me, because I don't have a printed code that says council. So I said, well, if we're gonna do a payment in lieu of, the mayor should opine, because is he okay with that? And so he got my memo and he read it and talked to the building official, and he said, no, I would rather have it up, open space. So that's where the mayor paid me. Blame somebody, blame me, because I didn't have that section of the code that said council.
And what does council think about all this?
I have no idea, I didn't know council was involved until tonight.
The code reads, well, if I'm looking at the right code.
I think the way it works is the planning commission makes a recommendation to council. I believe the council has thirty days to act on that recommendation. If no action is taken within the thirty days, then it's deemed approved. If the council acts on it, then they have a, a chance to, they have a choice to either uphold or to go against the decision of the, of the planning commission. But then you have to show up to the next council meeting, present your case to them, and then you'll, you know, you'll get their vote from, from council.
Thanks for that clarification. That was great.
It, it's only if we make a recommendation to council, and so far we have this emotion in the second, we haven't made any recommendation.
Right, you've done.
Counsel, yes, you might not, but if we make a recommendation to council, then it's up to them to decide whether to take the money in lieu of. The way I read that code, the, the one that's published.
Trying to visualize what, what the open space would be, so, you know, you, most likely you're gonna take it, try and take advantage of the stormwater management. You've already kind of, you know, it's, it's kinda wasted space.
It's kind of an open discussion amongst us right now, so I'm open to thoughts.
Well, if, you know, if, if we had to lose lots, let's say we lose two lots, then we're gonna reevaluate
Yeah.
this layout, and we're going to probably avoid impacting wetlands.
Yeah.
And earmark that area as open space.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably gonna avoid putting the stormwater pond on the lots.
Right.
So, and, and it may impact the length of the street. Maybe we don't have an elbow, maybe we just have one cul-de-sac. I mean, there's a lot of things that we'd have to evaluate if we're losing lots. The biggest thing is, is the project still viable if you lose two lots. I mean, that's something Drees is gonna have to analyze.
And secondarily, is the open space he provided actually usable? It's stormwater and it's wetlands and it's repairing.
It's likely not gonna be usable. It's likely gonna be environment, environmentally sensitive areas, the repairing setback, the, the wetlands and the stormwater pond. Not really usable.
And we'd be building two less homes in Mass, you know, in your community. I, I've been very passive kinda, and I'm just saying, the way the code reads, the four reasons to allow payment in lieu of we seem to fit those items, and I realize there's a, the subjective idea that the mayor has made an opinion, and we respect that. And I would, you know, if the opportunity were to happen, if you pass this through, it goes to council and we need to talk in front of them, I would welcome that discussion.
So it seems to me, Mr. Chairman, we, we can go out on a limb and assume the, what's in the published online is, is accurate and approved by the city. In that case, it is a recommendation to council and you could recommend it to go forward and council will make that decision, mayor will have input, that's probably your best way to, to do it.
Yeah.
Seems like the only way.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that and try that? Yeah, why don't we do that and try that because that's the way this code reads. I know we've had a little problem before with the code and not agreeing with your code, but this, this, uh, this is the one that's published.
I was correct on that.
Yeah, that, that'd be there. We could just make that and then, then leave it up to the council.
Your, in your motion, Tony, was just regarding the open space. It wasn't preliminary plan approval.
No.
Allow, you know, not requiring the open space. It was just the open space, so we'd have to probably act on that. And then if we agree that besides that issue, um, you know, the, the only other one is like the cul-de-sac, that this could receive preliminary plan approval, it would have to be a separate motion.
Right, that'd be right.
I think that's, I think that's how it would go. Okay, is there any more discussion on, on this item itself, the open space? Okay, nobody else? Um, uh, if we should, maybe we do a roll call just because I know, just so we.
Sure, yeah, no problem. Mr. Westbrooks?
Say yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Wallerhurst?
No.
Ms. Muske?
Yes.
All right, so then our recommendation to council will be to allow you to not have to have the open space, but like.
I understand the next steps.
Will not be, yeah, the final decision is not in our hands. Um, the, I think would probably be good is to make a motion for preliminary plan approval, um, recognizing, uh, that we would allow the, uh, the cul-de-sac to exceed the six hundred feet in the code. Um, so that's my motion.
I, I'd second that.
Well, Susan, did you get that?
Um, so can you say it?
Preliminary plan approval.
Yeah.
Um, recognizing that the cul-de-sac, or allowing for the cul-de-sac to exceed the six hundred feet.
Okay. Okay.
All right, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's painful getting there.
Well, I, first of all, thank you all for, for taking the time to have empathy for our scenario, and we will do the right thing. So, but do you, and I, it sounds like you, sir, and you have talked to the mayor. Would you think it would be at this stage appropriate for us just to unofficially and just invite them to discuss it? Or do you, would you rather us do it in public only?
I mean, you received what you were looking for, uh, right?
Yeah, but we wanna, we, you know.
Well, it still has to go to council.
Yeah.
So there's another opportunity for council to hold a role planning.
You'll have your chance there to talk to the mayor and the rest of the council, and you can present your case and.
I guess maybe that, that might be the, yeah, instead of, so maybe, I guess, just.
Of course.
Do it there.
And we, Dree's home is really, you never hear about it, they don't advertise, nor do we like to get in trouble. So we try to keep on, so we, you know, we just want to make sure we do the right thing by everybody.
But again, it is your choice. I mean, you can, anybody can.
Yeah, right, exactly. Well, thanks for.
One of your, uh, one of your challenge there is to figure out where to send your stormwater there because.
That's when we pay the engineer the big bucks.
Uh, I was involved with a house just south of your project there, and it was nowhere.
To go.
To your, yeah, because everything, the creek is so high, and there's nowhere, you know, to send your water. The, uh, the ditch in the front is pretty much nonexistent. So it's gonna be a challenge for you to figure out where to send your storm, stormwater.
Thank you.
And, and that's true, and Nils, we had had that conversation the first time we met. Yes, it's, it's flat, there's not a lot of fall.
Right.
Uh, it's gonna be very challenging to make the drainage and the detention pond.
Yeah, wait.
I think you already know that.
Yep. Susan, I, I brought ten copies of each of the floor plans you asked us to send electronic to you.
Oh, I brought, that's what I could all see it.
I brought ten of, these are a lot easier to see. Want me to leave these?
You could, yeah, you could send them right there.
All right, fantastic. I'll do that. There's, I didn't separate them, so there's ten each, yeah.
Ten each.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Certainly.
We have one more thing.
Okay, yeah, I know.
With us?
No.
No. Unless you guys will stay and send your.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You guys do, thank you.
We do have one under miscellaneous.
Apologize to you because I didn't know who the question was about council meetings. They kept looking at me when they said, oh, about going to council and having the same information I did.
I was kind of looking for that.
So, so was, uh, uh, Ms. Muske.
Yeah, I figured you might know.
But I wasn't gonna chime in until I was recognized. Good evening, I'll keep this just as short as I did the first time. Um, you did get the, uh, legal brief from the law department as the ordinance was presented to city council for its second reading, uh, at the last council meeting. Uh, now by administrative rule, this has to come to you for recommendation. I wanted to give you a visual of what I've been talking about, uh, with exhibits, an explanation of those exhibits and, and the exhibits themselves. Keep in mind that the first part of the changes will, uh, help the rest of it go along by redefining, uh, the definitions. And that is probably the first thing that you'll, uh, have to decide upon whether recommending or not recommending. We follow through with. But these are some of the things that came to me by just observing and talking, uh, to different residents and the use of, of the properties, uh, the residential properties that are on corners. If there's any further questions after you go over that briefly, I'd be happy to answer them. If you want to contact me at a later time, uh, feel free to do so.
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Um, in the corner lot, I saw that in the old code, kind of weird, two front, two front yards.
That was my biggest issue, Mr. France.
Well, I don't know, uh, and I thought about that, and I looked it up. Um, my idea would be then, you look at the rest of the code, you have the front, you have certain things you can't do in your front yard.
Correct.
You can't have an eight-foot privacy fence.
Correct.
However, uh, if there, if you're on a corner, uh, the other lot's now considered a side yard. You can have eight-foot privacy fence abutting going into the front yard. Would look kind of weird, wouldn't it, if you live on two streets and you're a corner lot? How would that look? And, and it would be like the back lot too, you can have an eight-foot privacy fence. And now you have an eight-foot side yard with an eight-foot fence on there.
I don't believe you can have eight foot, most you can go with six foot and they'll never.
How would that look too?
I, I, I think it looks great because I have a six-foot privacy fence all the way around my property.
Well, you live in, you don't live in a corner with.
I do not live in a corner.
Another street.
Right.
Yeah, that's the only thing that's kind of bothered me on that one.
My, my concern started off with and has always been that the limitations are so exaggerated for a corner lot that the loss of the use of the property of those residents by the way that the statutes are written at this present time. I mean, if you look at the first exhibit, how, how many square feet they lose? If they wanted to fence it in strictly by the code as it is initially written without a variance, and even if you go for the variance, it is undetermined how much of that variance is gonna get approved. Because they, they go back and forth. They don't just say, okay, you want to do this, we'll give you the variance for that. There's been a lot of discussion in these, in, in the BZA meetings about, well, you know, we don't particularly agree with that, but I'll give you this. You know, it's almost like a negotiation. It is a negotiation. And I think this process, as we've talked about in the past, should be streamlined. And I've helped the building department, the building commissioner streamline other subjects. Now, keep in mind that we've all agreed at some point in time that our statutes for building zoning codes are obsolete and ambiguous.
Well, every house has front yard, side yards, and rear yards. If you have, uh, if a house is on two streets and, you know, has two addresses and there's two front yards, then that throws everything off.
Right.
You have to determine which one is the front yard so that you can determine which one is the side yard. Even in a corner lot.
Right.
You know, there's gonna be one front yard, there's gonna be a side yard. And, and you, you know, when you apply the code, you apply it that way. But again, I think what you did right was first you need to establish which one is the front yard of, of this parcel.
And you're, you're actually eliminating a side yard, by the way, statute reads today. You're, you're eliminating a side yard.
Typically, the front yard is where your front door is or where the.
Thank you, sir.
Is, that's typically the way that.
That's where the address is, and I had this discussion with another city official. I was at his house for over an hour. He said, just look out, out my patio door. I said, no, let's go out your patio door and we'll talk about this. He says, well, I want that to be my front yard. Says, it can't be. He says, why not? I want it to be my front yard. Says, your driveway's on this side, your address is on this side. That's your front yard. And we had a friendly.
Right.
Kibitzing back and forth.
So, uh, under the current code, you're on a corner here, here's the guy's house.
Mm-hmm.
Where are they allowed to put a fence, or fence now?
Right now, if this is the front.
Yeah, this is the front, here's the front door.
Okay. Right now, they cannot put a fence from here to anywhere out this way. It has to start to the rear corner of the house, straight back. You lose the use of all of this.
And if it's a, you know, here's their lot, they're in the middle of the block, where are they permitted their lot to?
Like where my house would be?
Yeah.
I, I can go all the way up to the front line of my house on both sides, go all the way to my property line with the permission of everybody that I'm, I've ordered, which I have done, which is done to my house, and I can go all the way around.
Let me ask this question, just.
Sure.
Is it, is it part of an issue from a sightline standpoint that, I mean, I guess if you're considering. So I guess, as what you're getting at, you want to allow people to be able to take input their fence to here? Because I guess my, my concern would be, again, I'm kind of, I know, or I, I agree with this, that's your front yard.
Right.
But I guess what I would say is, is like, with this being a corner here, if you were to allow somebody to fence all the way up to here.
No.
That would create a sightline issue.
So, we're stopping at the front line of the house.
Stopping in the front line of the house.
Plus, plus, we're setting a standard that gives them up to, they can go anywhere from here to up to ten feet of the, uh.
Rear way.
Right of way. And I, I did, I, I worked that angle too, and I have so many different versions. First of all, I got laughed at when I was telling, when I was calling people, because I actually physically talked to different cities. When I told them we have two front yards, they wanted to know where I lived, uh, uh, concerning corners. But you have, Aurora has two feet from the right of way. Uh, Twinsburg has ten feet. I was asked to check a little farther out, Mayfield Heights, they have fifteen feet, and there's somebody else that's got like eighteen feet. We felt in talking with the building department and others that, uh, ten foot would be reasonable. That'd be a nice ten-foot area that you cannot go past. And it's, and it's the choice of the resident. So the, the building department can issue a permit without having to go to the BZA unless there's something really outside the box, out of the ordinary. And one of those things would be on the rear property, rear of the property, if you were fencing in your yard. If the topography is higher behind you, and they might want to add another foot or two foot to just that rear part of the fence. But that's not up to me, I'm not even touching it, but I'm just telling you, part of the discussion has been.
Okay.
And we wavered the thirty, thirty days that by administrative rule that you have to get back to us by. Okay, and that, I think Mr. France and Mr. Westbrooks brought that up the first time I was here. I, you know, you guys said, I don't think we can handle this and get this worked out in thirty days. Take sixty.
Okay.
Okay? I'm in no hurry. Nobody's gonna come to the building department for fencing permits before probably April first.
That's good, I appreciate that, yeah.
And council, that was unanimous by council.
When I first read that, that they waived the thirty day, I thought, they're trying to get an answer tonight.
No, 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 no.
Mark, did they clarify, like, no, they took away that you have to get back.
Right, and I brought that up the first time I talked to them.
So, okay, so I guess, I mean, unless you guys have any specific questions, now that you've got the stuff, you've got Vinnie's extra information. Do you want to take this, let's, you know, bring it up at the next meeting? Uh, granted, it's, you know, not everybody wants to sit down around Christmas.
Oh, absolutely not, no.
If we, if we can address this in January, that'd be great, but if you know you didn't have a chance because you're traveling and you got family in.
No, no, no.
If we have to push it to February, it's, it sounds like it's not.
Not a problem, not an issue whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay, and I, I'd like to advise you of one more thing, just an FYI. When these two guys that were sitting here prior to me, they're not gonna get the time that they took to try to explain this to you, to explain it to council, okay? And the only, they're not gonna be physically on the agenda. They're gonna sign a piece of paper when they came in of, uh, public comments.
They got five minutes.
Yeah, normally they got five minutes. I'm sure the mayor or who runs the council meeting and is already aware of this subject matter is not gonna give them much more than the five minutes. I didn't want to say that in front of them, but, you know, you guys kept looking at me like I was supposed to have some input and I wasn't gonna dare touch it.
No, I think just the dates was good enough. It was, uh, helpful. Okay, um, I don't think we need, you know, this is just a informational item.
Correct.
Point is that, we don't need that, continue it or anything, we just, maybe put it on the agenda for June or?
Yeah, it's, I think we can proceed it in and put it on the agenda.
Okay.
For January?
Yeah.
And we will not have a third reading. At the first council meeting in, uh, January, your meet, next meeting is until the Monday after that.
Okay.
So what will happen is, is we'll keep it at second reading until we get your recommendations or, you know, pluses or minuses, thumbs up, thumbs down, and whatever parts, and then we'll work from there at the next council meeting in January.
Okay.
Okay.
You referred it to the commission through a resolution, right? Is that what you did?
No, it was right, it was right in, it was right in the, uh, right, right in the, uh, ordinance itself.
Assistant ordinance?
Yes. There's an administrative rule that you exactly, uh, uh, you mentioned to me that I got the same day I came here from, uh, Mr. Gaddetti.
I was just curious.
Eleven forty-one something, I, those numbers ring a bell. I didn't bring.
Eleven forty-one, yeah.
Here's the, the clerk, if you want to read that.
Yeah, you advised me of that, Mr. France, the day that I came in, the first time that I came in. And I didn't get a chance to read it all, but Mark sent it to me the same day.
Yeah.
The exact same thing and.
Yeah, it says in the first whereas referral, so that's good. Usually I, I'm just, my experience is you, you, you would send a referral to consider it, and then an ordinance would come later, but it's all combined into one that's.
Right, yeah, because I made the motion.
I know we talked about it.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure you have my full visual that I have.
Yeah. Mr. Gaddetti's very good at what he does.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
It's all good, and it's contained in the first whereas, so it's a referral and ordinance all in one.
Right. So again, I thank you for your time. Um, I didn't have dinner this time, and we're out of here before eight o'clock.
This is supposed to be a quick one.
No, I think we'd probably appreciate any thoughts that all of you have.
Oh, absolutely.
On, on, on the language as well, so if you don't mind.
And like I said, in, in the letter, in my personal letter, that, uh, feel free to call me if there's any other questions. I do not mind whatsoever, it's, I know what I took on seven years ago.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, I think it's, but.
I did have one that I wanted to bring up. Um, possibly just, I don't know, that's something, just have it on the discussion about, but next year, kind of not allowing or limiting the amount of stuff that gets brought to the meetings. It doesn't give, it puts us in a position, it puts the, um, the planner and engineer in a position.
It's not fair that we don't have the time to review.
Yeah, there's not enough time to review things. If it's a clarification, and I, I get that there's that, I don't know how we start to define that, but I think if it's like a, a clarification in terms of a color or something like that, or, or a roadway width, that's fine. But I think substantial changes to the plans showing up at the meeting are, it, it's not fair to Mr. France, Mr. Gelati, or any of us.
Yeah, I don't like it.
To that matter, to, when we're getting packets like this that we have to try to sift through, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't.
And that's why I was subtly saying to the first applicant, take your time and submit it all at once.
I think if, if there's, if there's comments, you know, from, from the planner and from the engineer that are substantial enough that there, there's like twenty-three comments or something like that, I think that should be where they, they're, they're pushed automatically to the next agenda item. Unless there's, unless there's some circumstance or something like that that everybody agrees to or that. that, that everybody agrees to, or that there's an extenuating circumstance, but I think again, at the end of the day, these plans that, like, it's happened a lot this year, and it's made these meetings go very, very long.
Can, can I offer just, and, and...
Yeah, of course. This is kind of an open discussion for everybody.
I'm gonna compliment Mr. Gilotti here, but he's extremely thorough in his review of these things, so just using that 23 item example, a lot of that stuff is more technical design standards that...
Yeah.
You know, are kinda construction plan level. He's trying to get it out there and see well in advance for you to see through, but a lot of those are comments, in many cases, are comments that would hold up a planning approval, so much as they certainly won't get past the construction plan review.
It's maybe more of your, not to hit against you, but it's more of your comments sometimes. I think that all of a sudden it show up, you bring up a lot of good points and things that I think need addressing, and then, and, and even from an architectural standpoint, they all of a sudden just get dropped here, and everybody's trying to sift through the plans, I think, and try to, what, we don't know what's changed, I mean, we can base it off of comments and stuff, but I just feel like it gives everybody enough time to, to digest it, and then sometimes I think, at least I felt like, we, we have to make a decision, we have to make a determination, and that's kinda not fair to...
That's what I was just gonna touch on, Scott, is if the applicant shows up and they drop one of these packets on us, you know, right at the start of the meeting, or an hour before the meeting with a bunch of red ink on it, or whatever, okay, that's fine, but that doesn't mean we have to review it and rule on it tonight.
Correct.
That's right.
That's my opinion.
Same thing, cause...
We, we reserve the right to say, "Hey, you didn't give us enough time to digest this, we're gonna have to carry this to the next..."
Yeah, cause I think the only way to completely avoid it is to say, "Okay, you can't bring anything new," but then when someone comes in with a sign and...
Yeah.
That's...
We have to have some flexibility, but we have to, you know, protect ourselves, too.
So I think if we were gonna start digging into these deep tonight, I was gonna tell, you know, ignoring the big issues aside, that this is too much...
Yep.
To, to, to do it at, at a meeting, this, you know, we have to give our...
We need time to take a look at this, and you guys need the chance to...
I don't disagree with, like, there's, there's circumstances, I said, like, there's simple things that are, you know, a sign is a good example, or a color, or something like that. That's, that's simplistic enough, but if we're walking in with a packet full of drawings that everybody's getting handed...
That's why I don't think it's a simple thing, like, we, we set a rule that there's no submissions the night of, because I think certain things like a bronze return on a sign, we could, we can handle that. I think we almost have to take it one by one if someone shows up with this, and, you know, either we tell them right up front that, "Just to let you know, if you're, we, we, we're not guaranteeing we can take action on your stuff, because this, you're, you're looking at a bunch of stuff, or, or, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not doing our plan review tonight, just so you know."
Yeah, can't say the plan review on the site.
Submission, based on your initial submission.
I think where we make that, I think where we make that comment then, is it's a general statement at the beginning of the meeting, and it's not singling out applicants, it's making a general statement saying that if you've come tonight and there's substantial changes to your plans, you know, they will, we will not be taking action on this if this is, maybe we use the example of a sign return or something. Again, I don't know how we...
Or if they'd like, if they'd like to review what they've put in there, thank you, we'll get that to our reviewers, and we'll take it by ourselves, and we'll, we'll let you know, and, you know, next month.
We could do, to get it in writing, if you can put that statement right on the application.
That's what I was thinking, something...
And then if it is minor enough, you put it in the action item, that if the applicant can just, I, illustrate that they're meeting this minor thing at the meeting, then the commission can vote on it.
Well, I think there's a lot of times, I mean, your, your comments are, are, there've been a couple of times this year where your comments are saying you recommend that the commission doesn't take action tonight, or something along those lines. I don't, if that's the case, I don't think they should be coming to us. I think that at that point, they should be table till the next month, they then have, they have that time to respond to your comments, and supply an updated set. If that, if that type of comment, I think that's where we could kind of try to catch some of it, because again, like, if you're recommending, you know, first sign, going back to that example, if you're recommending approval based on the planning commission just agreeing with your, your comment about bronze, or a color, or something like that, then that to me, again, is, is simple enough, but if, if your comment is coming across, or anybody's review comments are coming across that it should be table until the next planning commission meeting, then I think that's where it shouldn't even be put on the agenda at that point.
Well, they can come in and, and discuss. I think they can come in and discuss it with us, but you guys don't have to vote. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, hate to just strike them from the agenda, they're allowed to come in and discuss.
Yeah, they have a right to be here. I'd have a hard time with telling them they can't be here, but...
Cause they may wanna discuss some of the comments.
A lot of it is, it gets back to, they're just rushing.
Yeah, like this guy came in today, and he says, "I have an end of the year, uh, deadline with Burrows to act on the property," which...
And you just submitted last month.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
So, I don't know.
So he's basically asking this commission here to tell him whether he should buy the property or not. I mean, that's what he's asking.
Yeah, that's, exactly, it's not fair to...